Okay, welcome everybody to our July 8th work session. We're gonna start with the roll call. Kinsey Becker.
Here.
McCoy here. Lyerly.
Here.
Mills.
Here.
Gerlach.
Here.
Crossen.
Here.
Lee. I think who will be joining us shortly. Okay, then we're going to move on to action items. Could someone please read the first motion? Thank you, Brian.
And just clarification, this is a special board meeting than the next one's.
I'm sorry, I should have said that. This is our special meeting.
I move that the employment of staff as presented be approved?
Second.
Discussion of questions. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. Rick, are you able to vote online?
Are you a yes or no?
Yes.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is, okay, with that vote, we just, we just voted for our new principal at Webster Elementary. Her name is Madeline. Is it Madeline Herman? Welcome. Would you like to come up and just say hi to everybody? And she's joined by her husband tonight, too. Hi.
Alright, good evening, everyone. My name is Madeline Herman. I'm so excited to join the Webster Elementary team and serve our Green Bay School District and looking forward to applying my background in arts integration and leadership to really grow the school and to make everything great for our students and the community.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yep. Alright, next is, under B resignation of staff, would someone please read that motion?
I move that the resignation of staff as presented be approved?
Second.
Discussion or questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open.
Do a voice vote. Yes.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Great, thank you. That completes our special meeting. Would someone make a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Is that a voice vote? Okay. Oh, all in favor? I opposed? Okay, we're adjourned and we're gonna go immediately into our work session. For this meeting, I just wanna say that we are joined at the table tonight by some members of our InterCity Student Council. Would you guys please introduce yourselves?
Hello, my name is Andres Mora and I'm gonna be a senior at Preble High School and I'm the president of InterCity Student Council.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Paige. I'm gonna be a sophomore at Preble and yeah.
Okay, well, welcome. Please feel free to ask questions or chime in if you have any thoughts. Okay. Alright, we need to do the roll call again. Kinsey?
Becker?
Here.
McCoy here. Lyerly?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Gerlach?
Here.
Crossen?
Here.
Lee.
Okay, like I said before, I think that who will be joining us shortly. I haven't heard from him. So I'm gonna just assume that he's running a little bit late. Alright, this is the point at our, on our agenda for open forum. If there's anybody who would like to speak? I don't think we have anybody tonight, so we're going to move on to, let me get to the right place here. Alright, so under number three, under education, that is going to be facilitated by Brian.
And we have two items today. The first thing we're gonna be talking about is the posting of standards. It looks like Angie and David are up here to talk about that, so go ahead.
Hi, thanks everyone. Angela Combe, Director of Curriculum. Just here tonight to be able to share with you the Wisconsin State Standards that we utilize here in Green Bay Public Schools. This is the time of year each year where we come forward to be able to show and acknowledge the standards that we are using per the state law. So you have the links and the different standards that we're using for those content areas. And I am certainly happy to answer any questions that you have regarding those.
No questions from anyone? Thanks. And the second item we're gonna be going over is the Charter for Advisory Committee on Human Growth and Development, the curriculum, and you're both still up here. David's gonna be taking it because he went like this, alright.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. We're presenting to you this evening for your consideration in the form of a charter, an opportunity to bring together an ad hoc advisory committee, which is required by state statute anytime you are re-engaging in a curriculum review process for human growth and development. We are on a cycle to re-engage in that work for our middle school and high school health courses, as well as for our elementary human growth and development lessons. So, given that the Board has most recently impaneled committees through the formation of a charter, that's the format that we're presenting this to you. It's self-explanatory in the extent that it names through state statute the various membership constituencies that need to be represented within that committee. Their work is done very much on the front end of the process to advise, to provide guidance and feedback, and then the curriculum team, as led by Dr. Eric Khan, will then pick up that process and make a recommendation for units of study and instructional materials to go along with it.
Any questions or comments? Lynn?
So, will they be chosen or become members of the committee the same way we've done in the past? That they apply and then the superintendent and the president make the final decision?
The Board simply puts the wheels in motion for the curriculum team to impanel this committee, which again is heavily dictated by the statute and who needs to be on it. The last time a committee was formed was 2017. And many of those invested parties were represented, not necessarily by individual, but by area of interest were represented on that committee as well. We'll follow a similar pattern. We'll work with some of our in-house staff to ensure that we make an outreach and create the most inclusive and representative committee possible for that.
Andrew?
Thank you. So, I think there's, I mean, I know where the, you know, kind of the roots of this are to make sure that there's, you know, certain areas of curriculum, this being one of them, has some community input, so it's not just, you know, downtown people making all the decisions without review. But if the curriculum, if the curriculum committee is picking all of them, there's no, there's no next step, there's no board ratification vote or something, I guess I have two thoughts. First of all, not with anyone here, not with anyone in the administration today, but you could have a committee meet all those checkboxes on that list and have very, very different, you know, viewpoints on it, right? You could have, you could have unbalanced viewpoints on there either accidentally or someone could intentionally do it or people could try to, you know, all apply and show interest of one viewpoint. I guess the second thing is, I think if there's board, I don't, I can't imagine it would ever not be unanimous yes unless something very unusual happened. I think it would give some protection also for the process that no one would be able to say, well, you picked this, you picked this committee of all this viewpoint or all that viewpoint and snuck it around the board because the board would have voted for the panel. So I'm always a big supporter of any officially structured committee having a, having a board vote to ratify the membership.
Andrew, is that something we would look at? Are you interested in making a motion on that or is it something you want us to investigate?
I thought I would, I thought I would bring it up here and I'd be open to a motion amending to add that procedure. I think we should, I think whenever we charter committees, the Board should have a vote to ratify and make it official.
I guess I have a question with that. With this being a state-directed, do we know of any, and Andrew, I agree, you know, I think we should have ownership of it in some capacity. Do we know of any other districts that vote on their committee or if it's just appointed? I'm kind of looking at Melissa because she's looking at me.
If I could, while Melissa's getting ready, this was actually my field. And in the past, it was statutorily required that the committee convene either every three or five years, and that's been recently removed. So the committee can convene whenever the district chooses, but I've never in my 25 years of teaching and leading this group, ever brought it to the Board. Maybe Melissa has different information about how it's done now.
I, I'm just gonna read you the first sentence in the statute and then we can discuss that. In any school district that offers a human growth and development curriculum, the school board shall appoint an ad hoc advisory committee whose role is to advise the school board on the design and implementation of the human growth and development curriculum and review of the curriculum. So you can delegate that authority to the district, which is what we've done here and why we haven't needed Board approval of that ad hoc committee because you can delegate that, but the statute does allow you to approve it.
James?
So, there is an amount of discussion about this specific committee as we were adding it to the agenda. And it feels like this is an unintended consequence of our policy where we would impanel advisory committees via charter. I don't think it was ever intended for this kind of committee to be beholden to a board vote. But however, we created that, that policy which would support Andrew's position that there is some sort of board ownership. So I would like to determine if we take the, maybe at our next work session or something, to kind of revisit our policy on advisory committees to make sure that we are not overly burdensome on these statutorily required committees and put ourselves in position where we're having to understand the membership composition, participate and do due diligence on them when these committees have been running, you know, across time. So I would invite that conversation as well.
So one of the things that, one of the policies in the 300 and 400 series that we need to bring to you is a policy on human growth and development curriculum, and within that policy is addressed the committee. So I'm not sure you have to review specifically your policy regarding your appointed ad hoc committees for human growth and development because we're going to address that in the policy itself as well. But if there's other policies or other groups that you think it would affect, then I understand why you would want to.
Lynn?
I just wanna say I wasn't trying to open a can of worms. I was just seriously asking for information. I am perfectly comfortable with you continuing to do it the way you've done it for 25 years.
Any other questions on the committee part? No? And this is just our normal cycle for this curriculum to come up. There's nothing, it's just our normal cycle.
Correct, and because of that, there'll be essentially kind of two more checks within the system. One, by statute, will report back to you as a Board when that committee, ad hoc committee, comes to its conclusion and what it contributed to the process. And then, of course, as we've done several times this year, we'll recommend to you to approve the purchase of the instructional materials, which I would expect we'd have the same discipline to be able to walk all the way back through the process and explain how this committee contributed to that decision as well.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I would ask then that at the July 22nd regular board meeting, that the Board provide direction on next step, whether that would be forming a committee and then bringing it to the Board for approval or just running with developing the committee on our own. July 22nd, thank you.
What sort of timeline are you on for this?
This would be the start of the first year of the curriculum review cycle, so the committee would be impaneled ideally in the fall. Do work through the early months of the work so that for the 25, 26 school year, we can come to you with a recommendation for materials.
Okay. Moving on to operations. That's going to be facilitated by Rick.
Alright.
Thank you, guys.
We have three agenda items under operations. The first one is a review and revisions to the district's school safety plan. We can invite Chris Coller to the table.
Hello?
Hey, Chris.
Can you tell us what the changes are to the plan, Chris?
Yep, so what's required by law is every three years we have to bring our.
Can you do it, microphone?
Sorry. What's required by law is every three years we're required to review our school safety plan, have it approved by the Board of Education. We did that two years ago, and the reason I'm bringing it again a little early is because we had some changes within executive level positions, I guess you could say. So a lot of the references in the plan were about the Executive Director of Student Services, so we removed the references to that since that position doesn't exist anymore. I also removed some police procedures in there that may or may not have been accurate just because we're not the police department, so I wanted to get those out of there so that there wasn't any feelings with our principles of how things should be based on our safety plan when in actuality, the police might respond somewhat differently. And then I also added some information in there related to our SenTeGix system that we have so that when we're looking at the different alerts that we use in the schools, it matches up with what the information talks about in our safety plan as to when to activate the alerts and to use use it in the situations that, when they're warranted. Majority of, if you look through, a little majority of the redlining was just cleaning up some language and there was some references to some old addendums or some old forms that were not being used anymore, so I just tried to clean it up and keep it current. Otherwise, I felt most of the things that were in there were still applicable and did not need to be changed.
Jane, any questions? Brian?
I've been associated with the district in different spots for a long time, and one thing that I'm always impressed on is Green Bay has a policy and a procedure set for a lot of stuff, which sometimes may slow us down on things, but in the safety, in your department, it is fantastic to see, especially what we saw happen at Aldo, what we saw happen throughout the district on a regular basis. So the fact that we have the plan and we work the plan on a regular basis with your department and throughout the district is a fantastic thing, so thank you.
You're very welcome. A lot of that plan has been in place since 2006, so we've just made some modifications in addition. So I can't take full credit for it, other than I thank our principals and our staff for doing the things that we need to do in those situations and always keeping level heads and making good decisions based on the information that we have. Go ahead.
Lynn?
I wanted to echo what Brian said, and I just want you to know that when you give us a whole bunch of redlined things like this, I do read every single bit of the red. I don't read all of the black writing, but I read all the red, so I just don't want that, you know, we're just saying, oh, it must be good because they did it. I read it and I prove it. Thank you.
Yeah, in the past update I had, I had not done a redlined version and Mr. Lyerly had asked for that. So this was my first venture in redlining a document, which was an adventure, let's just say. So hopefully it looks right when I take the red lines out, so I think we're okay. And there were a couple additional pieces of information that I shared with you that I wanted to talk about. One was, we have a emergency management plan that's posted in all of our classrooms that all of our administrators have. One side of that document has instructions for staff, so related to the alerts that we do, it has all of the instructions of what they would do from the safety plan in a multi-colored document. So I made some changes to that document. We again removed some old language. There was still Executive Directors of Schools listed, so we removed those references. And then originally, when we purchased the SenTeGix platform and we put it into action, I based the colors of the alerts on that emergency management plan, the way it was colored on that multicolor document. What we found from feedback from the buildings this year is that the yellow alert and the green alert looked very similar and were somewhat confusing because the strobes are not super bright because, and they don't strobe as fast as a regular strobe was for obvious reasons, so we don't want to have anybody with epilepsy or any problems with their staff or students. So when they're strobing slowly, it was hard for some staff to tell the difference. So I didn't want to make a change during the school year, so I waited until after the school year. And we're gonna enact, if passed with the school plan, we're gonna make the changes where I changed some colors, I removed the the yellow colored strobe, I changed that to a blue one, removed an alert that we had in there for severe weather, which is something that we wouldn't use very often. So we went from, I believe there were six alerts, now we're gonna have five. And then I changed the colors on the emergency management plan to match what the SenTeGix system is. So the one side again is for staff, there's sites for administrators, and there's different instructions on there depending on what side you look at. But it's one of the documents that we like to have posted in all of our classrooms next to all of our safety information so that in an emergency, if they're not sure what exactly they should do, they can look at that document and and read what the instructions are, especially important for our substitute staff that aren't always in our buildings. When our SenTeGix system is activated, it does read, there is a verbal messaging that comes with it and it is reading the same information as on that form. So just updating everything, getting it all the same color so that everything matches, and then I'll get the posters made and I'll get all the documentation needed and get it sent out to the building so they'd have it up and in place before school starts.
Brian?
I know we talked about this at one of our other meetings about what languages we're gonna have and we'll have all the posters in the appropriate languages, correct?
Yes, we'll have English, we'll have Among, we'll have Spanish, which is what we had before. And if we have needs for other languages, we can definitely get them created. Those are the ones that we had originally had posted.
Yeah, Laura?
I always like when you come to our board table. We don't see you very often, but it gives us an opportunity to remind people. Anybody who might be watching at home or might watch this at a later date about how much our district does to keep our staff and students safe. There's a lot to it. We don't talk about it too often. But whenever you come to visit us and bring us up to date, it gives us an opportunity to let people know that we take it seriously always, every day. So I just wanted to that down.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here and anytime you want me to come visit, just let me know.
Any other questions, comments? Alright, thank you, sir. Okay. Next item is the referendum project list. Vicki, you wanna update us on that?
Yes, sir.
If Lori, Kail and Brian and Kevin. We're joined by Lori Blaisley, Director of Communications, and Kail Polczynski, our new COO. Welcome, Kail. As well as Kevin and Brian from Nexus, our partners in this work for the referendum. Kinsey, we'll go ahead and. And we'll go ahead to the second slide, please. A little over two years ago, we worked with ATSNR to provide us with a facilities master plan. And through that planning, we were looking at a 30-year, thank you, 30-year facilities plan that amounted to between $450 and $500 million of deferred maintenance and improvement projects for the entire district. For this referendum, the primary focus for November is going to be on two areas. Safety, security, and ADA compliance issues, focusing on the secondary schools and also schools impacted by consolidation. Since 2016, the district's mill rate has continued to decline, which is depicted in this chart. With the exception of last year, which was due to the legislature allowing for low-spending districts to increase revenue limit to $11,000 per pupil. For the last two referendums, the district promised that the referendum would have no impact to the tax rate. And as the chart shows, the Board of Education actually approved a lower mill rate than the previous year, keeping the promise made to the taxpayers. Sorry, I don't want to put this in your face, Laura. For this particular referendum, the November 2024 referendum, our goal would be to hold mill rate at $8.26 or in fact lower it. The cost of the new debt would be offset by the drop in the district's existing debt. The cost of the new debt would be offset by the drop in the district's existing debt. Sorry.
Despite the mill rate declining over the last few years, We have heard from community members concerns about the rise in property taxes. So we wanted to be sure to address that this evening. One thing that's important for people to understand is that We are the only public government entity in which our mill rate is applied to the fair market value on their taxes versus the assessed value. And fair market often increases at a faster rate than your assessed value does. Especially in the last few years, we've seen significant increases in the fair market value. Two thousand and twenty and prior, the average increase was about three to four percent. As you can see by the slide, You know, we saw the highest at two thousand and twenty-two as a fourteen point three thirty-six percent. For the town of Scott that year, it was over twenty percent. So again, it depends on what municipality you're in, but we look at the average amongst all the municipalities that make up the school district. And again, that very quick rise in fair market value has been what has been really driving a property tax bills. In addition, in two thousand and twenty-two, the city of Green Bay reevaluated properties. We know that that also has created some confusion around the referendum because the referendum passed in that November of two thousand and twenty-two. And because the city of Green Bay had not done that evaluation of properties for over a decade for families who maybe had not Drawn a permit on their property, they may have seen a significant increase from the last time their property was assessed. And then finally, another issue that's also impacting taxes is voucher costs. So the district does tax for vouchers for the money that we lose due to voucher payments. And so especially last year, we saw significant increase to voucher payments went up thirty percent From the year before. So last year, the district levied for eleven point five million By nine million the year before, and that's for a little over eleven hundred students.
So why referendum now? In nineteen ninety-three, the Wisconsin State Legislature imposed revenue limits and that locked districts into Their spending the year prior. Green Bay was a low-spending district. So we were locked in at a low rate. The limits initially rose each year with inflation, but that stopped in two thousand and nine. And any increases since have been left to the discretion of Madison lawmakers. Over the last fifteen years, state lawmakers have not increased revenue limits to keep pace with inflation. We talked about that a lot at the board table. So before coming to you with the number, we took a look at What other districts are proposing for this November as well. So these are some that Aren't necessarily locked in yet, but these are the ones that are being discussed and the dollar amounts that they're considering. Notice that Madison is the only district that's larger than us that's on that list. But our neighbors down in Kekana are considering a two hundred million dollar referendum this November. Oh, including to peer. Okay. So I'm going to turn it over to Nexus if you want to talk through the proposal.
So the first item listed there are safety and security concerns. You see the total at the top. The directive was to look at Secure entrances and security enhancements largely focused around entering the building, but also Some of the issues surrounding bathrooms and renovating those similar to what Prebble is going to be receiving and being worked on right now as we speak. While doing a bathroom renovation, that will also address any ADA concerns in those bathrooms with tight turn radiuses and And accessibility concerns. Listed there are the secondary schools affected. And then lastly, On that list is relocation and security enhancements at the N E W School of Innovation at the Technical College. The second category are all the schools affected by school consolidations. One hundred and fifty million dollars For additions and renovations and deferred maintenance associated with those buildings. Beaumont Chapel, Doty, Lincoln, Redsmith, and the new West Side Elementary School. The operations have been calculated to be five million dollars annually. You note that with deferred maintenance and cost avoidance of some of the closures Was totaling sixty-seven point eight million, forty million of which was to totally replace MacArthur Elementary. And the goal is for equitable spaces and to provide greater operational efficiency.
Laura?
So can we just pause and flush that out a little bit? The deferred maintenance avoidance for school closings. Because this is to me really important that people understand that by by building By consolidating and building a new school That that We're going to avoid that cost, which is a really large amount of money. You know, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but I just wanted to pause and kind of emphasize that. Oh, okay. Welcome, Ku. Can you hear us? Ku, can you hear us?
Hi, Laura. Yes, I can. Thank you.
All right, welcome. All right. So just moving on, I that's all I wanted to do. I just wanted to pause and 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 kind of emphasize that.
And I just want to make sure I understand the one right above it. Operations savings, five million dollars annually. Are you saying that By closing those schools, that's what we're going to save each year?
Right. So if you recall, we had projected, I think it was two point four million for the first three schools we closed. Two point six million annually. So again, that's based on this year's dollars. That five million goes up with inflation each year.
Brian?
On the previous slide, you talked about the N E W School of Innovation and improvements there. How does that work with it being Located at NWTC? Is there There are certain areas I'm assuming that we're responsible for. Who who's paying the bill on that?
That'd be our responsibility for the renovations and the cost for those renovations at BTC. They Through our lease provide us An area that we would negotiate and then those costs to renovate that area would be on us.
So the draft project list Ends up totaling about one hundred, not about one hundred and eighty-three million dollars. And what our plan would be is to use Two days this week to present to the community and seek their feedback. Tomorrow, beginning at twelve fifteen at Neville Museum, We will do a presentation and do a roundtable discussion responding to the project list. We'll repeat that at six P M tomorrow night. And then on Thursday evening at six P M, we will Be at MacArthur Elementary. It looks like we have a tour first at five thirty.
Um, yes, we wanted to give people an opportunity because people may have questions as to why MacArthur was not ATSNR had suggested that they not be repaired, renovated. And so we thought being able, if people had questions about that, have an opportunity to take a look at the school.
We will also be gathering feedback on the website. We'll have a link for Community members that are unable to attend the community presentations to provide feedback. We'll bring that feedback to the Board of Education on July twenty-second Along with a recommendation for a project, final project list and referendum questions.
So I know I remember that these folks gave us a big, long List of possible projects last time. Am I to assume that is the project list you're taking to Neville and MacArthur tomorrow or Can I see the list? I mean, I'll be there to hear the meeting, but am I going to see the list?
This basically is the list. What we showed you included Visuals of the, from the the top of, we included information like improvements to Pick up and drop off. So we'll include that tomorrow in the presentation as well.
Um, Vicky, I've created the list from the slides that we're going to share tomorrow and I can forward that to the board as well. And that breaks down the projects per schools.
Anything else, Vicky? Okay. Anybody, any other questions, comments? Okay. That's it for that item. Thank you. In the next Item in operations is job description updates. Mike, please. Come to the table.
Good evening, everyone. Happy July. We have a few Of the job descriptions that we continue to build upon based on the formerly clerical positions. As we had shared a few months ago, we would keep bringing forward the ones As they were updated with new titles and revised and updated job descriptions reflective of their Actual roles and work based on the input that were added by employees and supervisors. So We have a variety of them for your consideration This month. Food service has three positions that they are re- reorganizing a little bit. There is only one of the three that have a A minor impact on the budget, but that's the food service budget and is fully funded. So that is listed accordingly. And Lynette would be happy to answer questions. If there are any questions about that, I could take this back to her. I don't believe she is here tonight.
She was on, she was on. Oh, she's not. Okay. Okay.
So
Go ahead, Laura.
Sorry. Uh, when it comes to food service, anything with the food service is Self-funded as far as they they their their budget is very much self-contained.
That's correct. Lynette would have made these recommendations if they weren't able to be addressed through the food service self Funded, self-contained budgets, no impact on district funds.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. I yield the floor back to Laura.
All right. Thanks, Mike. All right. Next is policy and governance, and that is going to be facilitated by Andrew.
All right. Thank you. We have three items. The first one is the annual Independent Hearing Officer Resolution. Anything to, anything by way of introduction from staff?
Just for our new board members. The law allows for expulsions for the board to appoint independent hearing officers to preside over expulsion hearing Who then makes the recommendation to the board and the board then decides whether to approve, modify, or Deny the hearing officer's recommendation. Because of the changes to Title Nine, The hearing officer has to be trained in Title Nine decision-making. And so most school districts have gone to an independent hearing officer because of that, those training requirements. So this is year number four, I believe, that we have asked you to approve an independent hearing officer To preside over the expulsion hearings. The feedback actually has been pretty positive with the hearing officers that we've had. The hearings are conducted very professionally. Families are very well respected. And we, students are given their due process. So we're coming again for the appointment of the same two hearing officers and for your approval on that.
All right, board questions? Laura?
I just I remember I've been on the board long enough to remember when we didn't have a independent hearing officer and And how extraordinarily difficult it was To schedule enough board members because we had to have a quorum of board members. And a superintendent and Legal staff and a whole bunch of, you know, principals and parents and kids. It was extraordinarily hard to do that. And by having By having this new, well, it's not new anymore, by having the independent hearing officer, it has I think made a healthier Process. So anyway, I just wanted to give everyone just a slight history lesson there.
Uh, yes.
I just would like to Share with you also, I I might be the only board member who ever participated In an expulsion hearing with a hearing officer before I was a school board member. And so I can tell you that the experience was excellent. I was asked by a neighbor whose child was about to be expelled To please come and to help them, to advise them. There was a huge language barrier. We had to Type on our computers using Google Translate to talk to each other in my home. And I came and spoke on behalf of the student because I had complete faith That this this child was, if given the support she needed, was going to be just fine. And it was a very, very smooth process and I felt very respected. I felt everyone was very respected. And I just, I thought it worked very well. So I definitely support this.
Brian?
I completely believe that all of our staff would be neutral when they're facing these prior to the hearing officer. It's obviously a tense situation when you're with a family and and to make sure that that neutral Officer is there, I think is a great thing. So I support this as well.
Uh, anyone else? Okay, I'll call in myself if everyone else has gone. So having more More history of this with more more years of of expulsion hearings. And I had, I did, I did vote no on the on the change to To go to this. It is Without a doubt, it is Easier and less onerous On board members to to do this, right? It's about many of the same other people would be involved, I would assume. There's maybe more flexibility of When you could do it and it wouldn't have to be pushed to board member schedules, but it is a It it was, at the same time, it may have made things Easier to do. It was also the board choosing to Remove a difficult and unpleasant piece of What we needed to do from from ourselves and we get to address it now in a Summary format. So the board still has the the final say. So I just want to make sure that there, you know, this isn't When you do this, something, you know, something is traded off. And what was, what is traded off is that the Ability for someone in this situation to be able to face and make their case directly to their Elected officials face to face is is removed. So I can't just You know, let this go with saying that there is not a trade-off. Something is traded off for this smoother Easier approach. I understand that there's I understand that there are title I understand that there are Title Nine issues. I think there's And I, I do actually have one question too for For Melissa, when we Is is the resolution where we decide we're doing it for one more year and appointing who the hearing officers are? That is combined into the same resolution and has to be done every year. Is that correct?
Correct. You can only decide you're going to do an I H O for one year and appoint for one year. So it is in the same resolution, but it is only for the one school year.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, Laura?
Melissa, could you give us just a short synopsis of what it would mean for school board members to have to be trained in Title IX?
I'll, I'll answer your question, but I, I would like to add, I, I understand Andrew saying that the trade-off is a smoother, easier approach because of the scheduling. But I think there is one other trade-off that should be noted, and that is there is an attorney conducting the hearing who's an independent, who's an independent, who again, is very well-trained and well-versed in student issues, um, student rights and due process. So I actually think that the hearing is conducted in a manner that appropriate, um, questions are asked, relevant questions are asked. We don't get into issues where questions that could cause due process issues and go up to appeal to the DPI are being asked. And we are, um, not strictly following the rules of evidence, but a hearing examiner does understand what is relevant and not relevant in deciding whether to expel and making that recommendation for the penalty. So I do think there are some positive trade-offs to having a hearing officer conduct the hearing. With respect to Title IX, um, the changes are coming August 1st, 2024 to Title IX. So Abby will be here for the, uh, August meetings with the changes to the policies. But in order to make a decision where Title IX would be implicated, you have to be trained in Title IX decision-making. So every one of you would have to go through that training, stay up to date on that training, and then, um, follow the Title IX policies and rules and, and regulations. In, in addition to that, you can't, um, only have a hearing officer just for Title IX-based expulsions. You either have a hearing officer or you don't. So we can't have the board decide the cases that are not Title IX and then a hearing officer do the Title IX cases. So that's why it's an all or nothing situation that we're in.
I just want to, um, to make sure that everyone, I know the board all understands this, but anyone else who's listening, that they understand that, you, you mentioned that we get it in summary form. I wouldn't call it summary form. The reports that we get, sometimes for one expulsion are forty pages. And we see every single word that was said, um, by everyone involved. And we see all the records and we have an opportunity. And I read it all because it's somebody's life. It's a very important part of a young person's life. I trust that my colleagues read it all. It's, it's a huge job and we do see it all. Nobody just gives us a little page.
Yes, I would say that we, um, I guess it would be fair to say that what we do in our decision-making is, um, perhaps what we do is a summarized version. And yes, the information is complete, but it's generally not a, it's not a court reporter transcript. It's, it's
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's complete information and notes with a lot of detail, but it's not word for word, right?
So when you have a hearing officer, you're required to have a court reporter because the families always have the opportunity to request a transcript. So you do have an opportunity to see a transcript if you want. I think what Lynn is referring to is the statements that are taken by the wit, by the administration in conducting the investigation. So we have witness statements, the accused statements, teacher's statements, those sorts of statements that is the first person, um, accounting of what they saw, what they witnessed and what the accused, um, has admitted to doing.
And certainly it's very detailed. Yes. Brian?
And just like, a- and I agree, Lynn, with what you're saying on that. And as fellow, our fellow board members recognize, this is also one of the things that we have an opportunity to change. And one of the things that we have the final say on through the recommendation. And this board has changed things as we've gone on, um, prior to us voting on it. So we're, we're the final say and we're the ones held accountable, whether now or through elections or other process with it. So I agree with what you're saying. And, you know, just so the public recognizes that we, we haven't done it a hundred percent following what the hearing officer's decision has been. So, and there's been good conversation with it within the board to kind of have that final stamp of approval or vote on what's going to happen.
Right. Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Okay, well, uh, that will move, uh, forward to the to the regular board meeting. And then we have adoption of policy three forty-five point one-one. High school grade scale, grade point average and class rank and policy.
So we're bringing you a, a group of policies tonight that are a direct result from the uh, twenty twenty-three Wisconsin Act ninety-five, which I think the high school kids, if you don't, if you want to go, you can go. But if you want to stay, this is probably directly affect you. Um, this is the legislature's new, um, implementation of what they're calling the guarantee admission program. So if you are in the top five percent of your class based solely on your grade point average, and you apply during early admission, you still have to apply during early admission to Madison, you will automatically get into UW Madison. If you are in the top ten percent of your class at the end of your junior year, so all of our eleventh graders who will be twelfth graders next year is the first class this will apply to. If you apply to all the other UW schools except Madison, you are in, you're in the top ten percent based solely on grade point average, you also are directly in guaranteed admission to those other schools. You only get to pick one. You can't pick all of them and then decide, but you are guaranteed admission. It sounds like a great idea, right? Like smart kids deserve to get into some of our best schools. The issue is the legislature did not provide very good guidance and the statutory la- language is very ambiguous and, um, very vague, which then causes us to have to fill in the blanks, but we're not really allowed to fill in the blanks in the way that we would like to fill in the blanks. So a team of us has been meeting, um, over the past month to get this implemented. It, uh, needs to be implemented by August 1st so that we can get those class ranks sent over to the UW system and our kids can start to apply for that guaranteed admission. The class and can so be based solely on GPA, nothing else. So where we have the academic excellence scholarships and we have a number of tie-breaking factors like ACT, your GPA in core classes, we can't do any of that with respect to this particular situation. So I'll give you an easy example of where this could be an issue. We don't do weighted grades in Green Bay, um, which I personally think is the right decision. And so if we have a class of one hundred in the ju- junior class that just completed their class and we have a hundred kids and twenty kids have a four point O. We have twenty kids who have tied for number one class ranking, but we're only allowed to give five to UW Madison and ten to all the other universities. So now we get to come up with a tie-breaking procedure that can only be based on GPA, which will then cause us to have to create a weighted grading system because there can't be any other deciding factors. Fortunately for this school year, for this year's eleventh grade classes in all of our high schools, we don't have any ties. So we are good to use the system we have in place and we don't need a tiebreaker. But coming to you today, we don't have that tiebreaker, um, decided. And so we're going to have to come to you in the future, what that tie-breaking procedure is going to look like. So the, the policy is vague with respect to that tie-breaking procedure. Because we, we also can't, um, round up, we have to round down. So if we have a graduating class of a hundred and forty-seven kids and five percent is seven point three five, the UW system announced to us, um, right before the Fourth of July holiday that they have to consider whole students. They don't get to consider partial students. So only seven would be top five percent, eight is not. Seven point six is not considered, only seven is and not number eight. That's the UW's interpretation of this law. Uh, WSB, AUSA, the School Administrators Association and SAA, the School, um, Administrators Association also have, um, requested for clarification from the legislature, but I don't know how soon we're going to get that.
Brian?
I mean, there's, there's many issues on this, obviously, and you're doing a great job on this and figuring it out with that. So we have, how many schools issuing degrees in Green Bay? Eight, seven, eight? So if we had a third of a student at eight schools, well, let's just say six, because that's a lot easier math. We'd be losing out on three students, two students with that by the rounding down as opposed to up. That doesn't seem fair at all.
So interestingly enough, WSB's model policy that they put out before this conference call late, um, a few weeks ago, their model policy called for rounding up. And then we all heard on the conference call that UW was interpreting as rounding down. So that's why we had to cha- send you the changes today. The other really sticky point is going to be our high schools that use competency-based grading because competency-based grading doesn't have a GPA. So we're also going to have to figure out how to create a GPA for those high schools because we are required by the statute for any high school that has fifteen or more students in a class at the end of their junior year. We have to give those names to the university system.
Uh, Brian?
With this whole ranking thing, wouldn't that be something that the school district would determine and not the university? With, as far as like a local control issue and?
Yes, we get to determine that. We get to determine the ranking, but the loss is the ranking can only be done based on grade point average. So we have to figure out for competency-based grading, how to turn that competency-based grading into a grade point average.
I guess I'm looking at a way that we get that rounding up instead of down, whether it be a local control issue as opposed to the university being able to decide that.
That will not be a local control issue because five percent is being interpreted as whole bodies.
Um, James?
So I understand your position on weighted grading, um, but looking at this in a tie-break scenario, I understand its value in differentiating students at this point. I, I don't know of how other school districts handle weighted grading AP versus IB. Do you have any insight on that?
I don't, because the only other school who does IB is Notre Dame. I think, no? Or Howard San Francisco, okay.
Not specific to the distinction between AP and IB, although historically they're, when you're weighting typically both are weighted, um, being valued as college-level coursework. Um, on the, on the conference call, um, several districts who already had historically made use of weighted grades, um, felt like they had the solution in hand because of that.
So, um, you said eleventh grade and down is going to be weighted GPAs, right? With that?
We only need to do weighted for purposes of tiebreakers for this particular program, which will be really confusing to our students because, uh, Infinite Campus through the parent portal provides that class ranking available to students. So we may be, we go to the fourth dec- decimal point in our GPAs right now, which avoids a lot of the tiebreakers. But there's really going to have to be two rankings certified on the transcript to the UW system because while we may round up for that five percent, we're going to have to round down for the UW system. So you may be five percent for district purposes, but you may be six percent for purposes of the UW system and the guaranteed admission.
Yes?
This is kind of a general question, but why would we only switch to weighted GPA for like a tiebreaker? Why wouldn't we do it for the whole? For everyone?
Yeah, that's been a, that's been a longstanding, um, conversation, not just within this district, but lots of districts, um, who recognize that, um, if you're taking a class that is considered a college-level class, that uh, the benefits of earning the A in that class and the work that you would put into that would have, um, frankly, a payoff and benefits that go beyond, uh, simply just your grade point average, but they would be recognized on your transcript as being high lo- higher level coursework. They would often allow you to um, skip over entry-level coursework in college and that that's where the value of taking that course lies.
Um, and so I add to that on the topic of the weighted grading, which we have done a couple of rounds of since I've been on the board. One, one thing that we discovered at, at the time, one of the drawbacks to it is that at least the last time we did this, we found that many competitive institutions would unweight the grades. And so someone might be graduating here thinking that, oh, I'm, I'm first because I had a, a four point, you know, two-six and someone else, uh, also were, uh, very hardened, very well and got a, a four point in the regular curriculum. Uh, but then most highly selective institutions were just unwinding it and saying, no, four point two, um, we might acknowledge your coursework was challenging, but you had a three point six and they had a four point, a four point O. And so that was an issue at, at the time as well, but that certainly is a, a conversation that could be, be opened again there. And there was very much, um, there, that was a very much, um, student, um, uh, students pushed for that review and we, we did that and it's, it's been some years and that could be a, a place to, you know, to go again. And students pushed the board towards that. So I just wanted to, uh, point that out.
Could one of you explain to me, please, this thing about competent, is it competency-based grading? And, uh, I, I just don't understand what you're talking about.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, in a competency-based grading system, uh, well, so we presented to you standards earlier tonight. So standards, outline the language of what you would reasonably expect someone to do. There's a lot of different ways you can say whether someone met a standard or not. One way you can say it is here are some assignments and tasks to do, and we will score them and grade them and give you a grade on those. Another way you can say that someone's done it is you've demonstrated mastery of the standard. Check or plus, you've demonstrated that competency. And it doesn't turn into a number currently. At, uh, JDOL and at NEW, um, we have two schools who are really built around that foundation of competency. Particularly, uh, when you see, um, more project or problem-based learning models, you, you, you accumulate your competencies through the projects that you complete. And again, there's, there's scrutiny on doing them up to the level of the standard. It just doesn't turn into a numerical representation, which is now where we, now where we sit with those two schools in particular around having to create some way to say the student is at the top, even though all twenty students we might be looking at have met the competencies, we're now going to have to create some kind of a rank order. And the way we have to do that is with numbers.
Brian?
Which while this situation may make it a little bit more challenging, I think the payoff for that is extraordinary as far as making sure that we have our students learning in many different ways to match their learning styles and making sure that they're college or career-ready. And the benefits of that, I, I think are significant as opposed to one instance where we're an issue with it that I'm sure we'll figure out. So that's what makes Green Bay very unique and very strong is our ability to make sure we're meeting our learners where we need to. So.
There was a small but mighty cry-out from people on the conference call who were involved in, uh, competency-based programming to say, don't, don't forget about this when we talk about maybe what the next version of this needs to look like or what the, what the cleanup has to look like.
Laura?
Um, Melissa, maybe you can't answer this, but do you know what the motivation around this change was? And I'm assuming it's a political motivation of some sort, but maybe I'm wrong.
I, I don't know the motivation. I know on the conference call with, um, one of the assistant superintendents from DPI and the representative from the UW system, they indicated that this plan was hatched during the legislation on stripping the university systems of their EDI funding. And so this was a trade-off for allowing them to keep some of that funding and enacting, um, this part of the legislation.
So it was political? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, cool. Did you have anything?
Yeah, hi, um. You know, this, this, this is a very interesting, uh, program and, um, I know that we don't have the criterias yet for the tiebreaker. And I know we talked about, um, you know, the difference between a standard and someone who's completely, uh, on board with the IB and AP programs. Uh, but I, I also would like to maybe add a recommendation that uh, based on our student populations and demographics of our students. based on our student populations and demographics of our students here in G B, we have a lot of students who recently just arrived to our country. And I have seen individuals who worked really hard, you know, at the regular level courses, the standard courses, but achieved the same type of G P A, but can't really fully, you know, go into like A P or I B courses. Will we, in this case, will we consider that someone who took the A P or who went through the A B courses have the same G P A versus this person who has to overcome, you know, challenges and barriers to achieve the G P As? Will we put that into consideration as well? Because I think it's, it's, it's just the idea that, hey, all of you guys achieved. You worked really hard and you achieved this G P A, this academic standard of excellence. But then again, we have to make a tough choice between you and the other person. I think that's, that's really unfair, in my opinion.
So if I can respond, as you're saying that, Koo, I'm looking at the district pillars behind Laura that says engagement, equity and excellence. And I don't believe when this law was written that those things were considered. If the law strictly requires us to base rankings on G P A. So while that would make sense here in Green Bay, we're confined by the very strict language of the law that says we can only consider G P A. And so when we have to create a tiebreaker, it can only be based on whatever mechanism we can use based on a student's G P A for tiebreaking.
Also, I think I, I read it in there too. Also, this involves like scholarship as well, right?
Nope, this will not involve scholarships. So this policy is strictly for ranking students in order to certify five percent and ten percent to the state of Wisconsin for the U W system in order to have our students be able to participate in the guaranteed admission program.
So, so it's pretty much is guaranteed to get in, but with no prior, no scholarship tied to that program because you're a top five in your district. You're just, just the right to get in, pretty much.
Correct.
Wow, thank you.
Rick? So I have a question that's more of a mechanical thing. So that, that, that five percent and ten percent list is sent to the U W system. And if a person on that list opts not to go to the university, does, is there like a order of merit list, a ranking list where the next person in line can get on there?
You are, you have to apply, so you're only eligible if you apply. So if, if you don't apply, then no other individual gets your spot.
What other unintended consequences have you all perceived with this?
I think a, an unintended consequence might come from the various sizes of our representative high schools in our district, realizing that while we're talking about five percent, ten percent, you know, that that's because it's percentages, it's larger numbers from some, smaller numbers from, from others. And depending on the motivation of an individual to get into a state institution, where, where do they want to secure that opportunity if they believe that can be done?
I think another unintended consequence is, this is gonna, and I'm, I'm speaking primarily for U W Madison. So a very large school, right? They admit thousands and thousands and thousands of kids every single year. But I think that numbers is a little bit false and that certain spots are reserved for legacy kids, reserved for athletes, you know, there's a number of categories. So the amount of spots that are actually available for general admission is not as big as what you would think based on how many kids that are admitted. I think now that the university has to allocate spaces for this program, that's going to make those spots smaller for kids who are applying for general admission.
And I, I do think to Mr. Lee's point that an unintended consequence may communicate a sense to students who maybe aren't among the five percent or ten percent that you're not worthy to apply. When in all reality, there will be available spots, there'll be scholarship opportunities, there'll be still increased likelihood that strong students coming out of our district, we would be considered valued to the U W system. And wondering now about this designation as maybe to a student creating a hard line that you're either, you're either worthy or you're not.
I guess I, I would, and you can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. I would say with the, with the possible exception of Madison where that might be a really good feather in your cap. If I have, if I was in the top five, maybe I was in the top five percent of my class, didn't have some of the same opportunities as other people to do co-curriculars, maybe had some issues going, health issues going on or family obligations. It would be having achieved that top five percent, that's, that's great because I'm, you know, still can get into Madison regardless of having to worry about if, you know, how I look in the, the essay and so forth. I would imagine most of our students who are as, as far as needing to be in the top ten percent to be guaranteed admission, I, I would think most, most students who do well academically here that aren't in the top ten percent probably would not very often have difficulty with the, with the exception of Madison, because it's so selective and nationally, so that fair? A fair assumption?
I think what, what's behind my point is that this triggers some communication back and forth between the university that might be eye opening to a student who's potentially first generation or maybe hasn't even thought of themselves as, as college bound, which is always a value when someone reaches out to you, says, you know, we'd like you here. But I agree, and that's the whole point of the five percent, ten percent is that it's a much larger pool who would be ready and eligible to attend the, the other universities.
But Madison is, Madison is quite, quite selective and I don't, I don't know that you could say it's, you know, being in the top ten percent of your class, I would think your chances are probably, you know, top ten, but not the top five, I would think a student's chances of Madison are reasonably good. But I would think, I would think being in the top ten, being in the top twenty, if it's just admission, we're talking about not scholarships, that shouldn't be a problem to, I mean, we have, we have large, large cross sections of our graduating classes go to state schools, Madison being a bit tougher. A significant bit tougher. Brian?
It's, I, I can't remember where I heard it from, but isn't La Crosse also something involved with this as far as not being admitted with the other U W schools?
So in addition to this program, so there's the guaranteed admission program where you send your application in five percent, ten percent automatically admitted. There's also direct admit program. And the direct admit program, the, if students opt into that program, and in Green Bay, you're opted in unless you opt out, your transcripts are sent to the university system for the schools that are participating. Eau Claire, La Crosse and Madison are not participating. So for all those other U W schools, if our students don't opt out, their transcripts are being sent to the university system and then you're notified without having to apply. You, your information is sent on, the universities then look through your information and they come back and say, congrats, you've been admitted to U W Whitewater. Would you like to attend? It, that is breaking, that program is breaking down barriers for our students who haven't, or who are first generation college, who would have barriers to filling out those applications, who would have barriers for submitting the cost for the, the admissions and who then can start having that conversation once they're admitted. What would college look like for me? So that is another program on top of direct, on top of guaranteed admission, on top of regular application.
Both new, both happening at the same time for the first time for the twenty five, twenty six students.
Anyone else? Anything else? All right, thank you. That'll move forward to the regular meeting. And then we have the three hundred, four hundred series policy and rule revisions pertaining to Wisconsin, twenty twenty three Wisconsin Act ninety five.
So I can just back up, we had one more adoption policy, that's three forty five point six one, early graduation from high school. This is a new policy for us. We already do early graduation, we just didn't have a policy. The reason we need this policy is because this affects whether you're grouped into the rankings for the guaranteed admission program. So this policy just codifies what we're already doing and then clarifies whether you'd be included in that rankings for the guaranteed admission program.
Any questions? Okay, and then the, then moving forward to the three hundred, four hundred series policy rule revisions?
I'll just read the titles and let me know if you have any questions. Does that work? Okay, three forty three point eight, transfer of credits from international study.
Questions? Okay.
Three forty five point five, honor rolls for high schools.
Board member questions? And when, whenever I say member questions, I think student members, by the way, I'm not like, it's, it's everybody. Okay, questions? All right.
Three forty five point six, graduation requirements.
Questions? Okay.
Three forty five point six, rule procedures for meeting graduation requirements.
Questions? Okay.
And then we have policy and rule three forty five point six two pertaining to graduation ceremony and the guidelines for participating in the ceremony.
Questions? Okay.
Three seventy, co-curricular activities.
Right, questions? Looks like in the policy, you just remove, district encourages the full participation of elementary and middle school students, because I'm sure it intended to mean co-curriculars aren't just for high school, but it inadvertently wrote something that doesn't even mention that we have them in high school. So we
You're correct. Okay, and then policy for eleven point, I'm sorry, four forty one point one, student council, we're recommend, it's currently student government, we're recommending it, changing it to council because that is how it was referenced throughout the entire policy as student council to keep consistent language.
And this is just the just government to, to council, that's it.
And we added a non-discrimination clause.
All right, any questions? Okay, and those will move, move forward. That completes the policy and governance session. So I'll turn it back over to the, the board president for the end.
Okay. That completes our agenda, except that we're going to adjourn into closed session. Go ahead. I, I, maybe this has always been here and I just never noticed it, but I don't know what this means. Number six says board member agenda items. What does that mean? I don't have a good answer for that, actually.
I would assume it would be a place where a board member would ask to have something placed on a, on a future agenda. But the item that's in it is usually just a board meeting schedule.
So Ben, because I've heard questions asked many times and I've asked, how do you get something on the agenda? Is this a time when board members are supposed to say, I have a suggestion, what's that for? James?
So this is actually governed by policy. So the primary way we build agenda is through the superintendent and president of a relationship and they build the agenda. In the event that there is some reason why a board member needs an agenda item, said there's a policy by which I think you have to have a person second it, right? So I would refer you to the policy around it. But there is a way to handle exceptions to the president and the superintendent agenda creation. It's just not, it's just not a, a time period where at the board table, we propose agenda items. It's to Andrew's point, where they would show up if they were permitted to be on the agenda, didn't fit into one of the categories above.
Okay, so it was presented earlier to the president and now it shows up here. Thank you. Andrew?
So there, there's a, there's a couple of things, two. This, now this is, this has never, this has never happened. I can think of a, I can think of a couple of times that came very, very close to happening, but the president decided, then prior to before Laura was president, before most people were members of the, before most were members of this board. I believe there is a policy where two, two board members can force there to be a meeting. And by logical extension, determine what the meeting would be about, because otherwise it would be a pointless policy. So two board members can, can force a meeting, but in practice, the board president, if that situation has happened, has usually just called called the meeting. I believe there's also something that does generally state that board members have the right to place, to get things to an agenda, but there's, are some some room for placing the, determining where they'll be placed and also to ask for a board review if there's an impasse because the board member wants something on in the book.
James?
I would, I think it's policy one seven one point two, if you want to look it up.
Okay, we're going to adjourn into closed session with someone. Like to read the motion. Go ahead, Lynn. I move that the board adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eighty five, section one C, considering the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body, governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to wit interim superintendent contract.
Second.
Nancy? Lee? Koo, are you there?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, Crossen?
Yes.
Gerlach? Yes. Mills?
Yes.
Lyerly?
Yes.
Yes. Becker?
Yes.
Okay. We are adjourned into closed session.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts board of education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero four four eight two zero two five or by email at communications at gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.